All right, good evening, everyone. We're just gonna go ahead and get started. There may be one or two more council joining us at some point throughout the meeting. But we'll try to keep it as brief as possible to respect everyone's time. This is a public safety meeting of the Springfield City Council. I am Chairman Orlando Ramos. And like to go around and do introductions if that's okay, we'll start. We'll clockwise in order of my screen, we're gonna go with Sergeant Peltier. You're on mute.
I'm sorry, Sergeant Peltier with the Springfield Police Department. I'm in charge of the ordinance unit and the K nine unit for the city of Springfield.
Thank you, we have Elderman Gerald Antunes, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that.
Oh, Mr. Ramos, you should have Antunes correct. I'm older Gerald Antunes from New Haven, Connecticut. I am the Chair of the Public Safety Committee there.
Thank you for joining us. And we have a Misty Mazza.
Hi, I'm the Legislative from New Haven as well.
Thank you for joining us, Council Whitfield.
Hello, I'm Council Whitfield and also on the Public Safety Committee. Glad to be here, my granddaughter's with me, so I'm mute and no camera.
And Council Curran.
Hi, good evening, this is Council Curran, glad to be here and thank you very much, Council Ramos, Representative Ramos, for putting this together.
Thank you, thank you for joining us. There's one item on the agenda in tonight's meeting and that is the discussion of the proposed ordinance to prohibit gas stations from selling gas to illegal dirt bikers. Just so everyone knows, this all came about because the city of Springfield, like many mid-sized cities everywhere, have been experiencing, experiencing challenges with people riding illegal dirt bikes and off-highway vehicles who have become dangerous and have resulted in many accidents and even deaths here in the city, so we're trying to do whatever we can, and I'm trying to do whatever I can as Chairman of Public Safety to keep our public safe from illegal dirt bikes and to protect the riders themselves from hurting themselves or other folks. So in doing some research, I found that there were several municipalities and in Connecticut that had a law that prohibited gas stations from selling gasoline to illegal dirt bikers. And New Haven was one of them, and this ordinance is actually modeled after the ordinance in New Haven. And I appreciate the cooperation from everyone in that municipality, particularly the Board of Elders Office for sharing information with us. And especially to Mr. Alderman for being here with us this evening. There were some questions that came up at the last public safety meeting that we had. And we felt that it was best to hear from someone in New Haven to hear exactly how things have been going with that ordinance. And particularly how you were able to deal with some of the challenges that came with proposing such a piece of legislation, whether or not it has had an effect on the illegal dirt bikers. And I believe it was Tracy Council Whitfield who actually had questions around what sort of effect this has had on the gas station clerks themselves. There were some concerns about whether or not this would put gas station clerks at any sort of risk. And you know, if there's anything that can be added or amended in this ordinance to prevent that from happening, so if it's okay with you, Mr. Alderman, I'd like to turn it over to you and if you can give us a brief overview as to how things have been going in New Haven and some of the challenges that you faced and again, if you can address Council Whitfield's concern, it will be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, you surprised me, I wasn't expecting to give any sort of presentation or the this, this particular piece of legislation actually didn't go through our Public Safety Committee, we have a legislation committee that handled the whole thing. And I believe my staff person here, Misty Mazda, was the lead person on that. And I will push everything over to her, but I would say that to my knowledge so far, we just enacted this in December. So it's just getting around this season now. So we, we don't really have feedback on response and reaction of those people in the gas industry. But Misty can give you more information on how the Legislative Committee went through it. Would you do that, please, Misty?
I'm sure I would be glad to, so yes, it was brought before the Legislative Committee. And it was something that was worked on for quite a while. And then it was brought for the committee and then you know, they did decide to implement it and the other part of that as well is we increased our fines too. So in addition to making it illegal for local gas stations to sell gas to an off-road vehicle if it was not on a trailer. Is we also increased the fines. I apologize, I can't remember them off the top of my head, but it was a dramatic increase, I want to say like you know, around five to 10 times more of what the city was charging before. And it's over a thousand dollars now and it's also if they continue to do it, the fine, we're able to increase it as well based on future offenses if the same person gets stopped. And it's high enough now to where what was happening before is it was so low, they were just paying their fine, getting their off-road vehicle back and getting it right back on the road like the same day. So now the fine's so high that what we're hoping will happen is that it'll be too much for them, at least if they don't pay the fine, at least we'll be able to now keep their off-road vehicle impounded and keep it off the street. And of course, overall, we're hoping it's just a deterrent and they stop doing this activity, right? That's the overall goal.
Yes, if I could, if I could add to that, that the fines started a thousand dollars, second offense is fifteen hundred and then two thousand for everything after that. That's for the riders or the drivers of the vehicles, a hundred dollar fine each time the gas station attendant sells. And there's signs, our ordinance was a little more expansive than just that. Like I said, it went as far as fines for the riders as well as the drivers in pounding the vehicles and in Hartford, they actually destroyed them. They took them to a crusher and crushed. I kind of like that idea, I mean, before as an alder, I was thirty years in the police department, so I kind of liked that idea of crushing those violators vehicles. So it involved a lot more, I don't know if your ordinance goes that far or if you're just dealing with the sales. But we did go a little bit further than I'm sure Councilwoman Whitfield might have the entire copy of our ordinance.
Yes, and so yes, we did do that, we've sorted on this in phases. Last year or two years ago, we actually passed an ordinance and a home rule petition. The ordinance was to increase the fines, the home rule petition was to allow exactly what you described, which was to confiscate the vehicles and have the the police department do a public crushing of those vehicles once we confiscate them. That is working its way through the House of Representatives. And hopefully it will be out of with favorable recommendation soon this summer. We're also joined by Council Davila, Council, thank you for joining us. So.
Can you, so can we get clarification, like, has there been any incidents where folks were not on a trailer and the clerks at the gas station didn't service them? And they got mad or anything or got aggressive with clerks?
Yeah, has, have you heard of any incidents like that happening in the Haven?
No, nothing has come to my attention. And I still stay in pretty close contact with our police department. We haven't heard anything as yet, but remember the season for rioting is just kind of picking up now, so in the next month or so, we'll see if there's something really going to turn out of that.
And Misty, have you heard anything of any sort of incident occurring involving a gas station clerk?
I have not, no.
I mean, I'm sure that's something that was considered by the, by the committee. Okay, and I had the same concerns, I mean, we obviously want to make sure that you know, we're not putting anyone in any, in harm's way. And you know, that's definitely a concern of ours, so.
And our process entails a public hearing as well, so any of those issues usually come up at that point and addressed.
Council Whitfield, did that answer your question or did you want to ask a follow-up question?
No, that answered the question. It is early in the season, so I'll be interested to see like what happens if that type of situation did you know, come up.
Sure. Any questions from Council Davila or Council Curran?
I guess, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I, I do believe the fines for the for the sale of the gasoline to these off-road vehicles that I believe you said, is that going to be to the store and to the attending itself?
No, the, the fine as written would be for, to the gas station owner. It would not be to the clerk.
Okay, is there, is there a mechanism in which if we identify a problematic store that we can address that issue if we find somebody gets repeatedly getting fined for violation of this potential ordinance? I mean, at some point you have to get the point that we're not kidding.
Sure, Sergeant Peltier, do you have a response?
Okay, I forgive me, could you repeat your question, please?
Well, I guess, I guess, sort of, my question is, I'm thinking outside of the box here, I know the the fine system hopefully will be prepared, but how do we handle those potential stores that continue to violate the ordinance? At what point do we have a systemic mechanism to say, listen, you get yourself straight? Or we shut you down if you have to.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking over the ordinance, there's, there's really no progression of fines that I can see, it says one hundred dollars per occurrence. And that's, that's kind of it, so there is no progressive deterrent that I can see. Am I, am I reading it incorrectly?
No, I think that's the way that we wrote it, I don't believe that there was any and I left it open, you know, this is open for, for amendments, if you have an amendment in mind, Council Davila, you're welcome to.
Okay. No, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking outside of the box because my compliments to you, Council Ramos, for doing this, because as we all know, it's a serious problem here in the city and my compliments.
Thank you. Yeah, so we can, so we can entertain a motion at the time that it comes out of committee, if my colleagues are interested in putting together or putting in place some sort of progressive discipline. That'll be fine, keep in mind that we can, as a municipality, we can only fine up to three hundred dollars per offense. So just keep that in mind. Are there any other questions from councilors? Sergeant Peltier, anything else you wanted to add?
Well, I, I just would like to add again, in reading the ordinance as written, it does have a provision to penalize the employee, it says any owner or employee of a retail dealer. So I guess the question did arise, is it just, you know, does it protect the actual employee from being fined? And I guess the answer would be no, that employees are included in this ordinance as possibly could be fined, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, so it does say or, so that would leave discretion up to the officer whether to give a fine to the clerk or, or the owner.
I guess, I guess the only, how I interpret that theoretically you know, you have an employee that will just say, you know what? I understand it's an ordinance, but I, I'm gonna do what I do and instead of maybe hitting the owner of the store, maybe the, the, the actual employee should be fined because he's just willfully disregarding, you know, the ordinance.
So through your experience, Sergeant, how would you recommend it be worded? Would you, would you recommend that there be the fine or to give discretion to the officer to find both parties?
Well, I would, I, I would say the owner of the store is going to care a little more than the employee. Because ultimately, you know, the employee could say, you know what? You know, I don't want to work here anymore and you know, that's but an owner of a store would take, I think, this ordinance much more seriously and educate and you know, maybe progressively discipline their own employees with repeated offenses. I, I I guess I'm kind of conflicted about citing or penalizing an employee because you know, in the end, they're the ones there, they have to make decisions, I get it, but you know, these owners have to educate and you know, bring up to speed these employees and maybe they'll, they'll fall back on, well, I wasn't told, you know what I'm saying, they'll have some type of you know, defense for the violation where the owners, they're gonna take it much more seriously.
So I, as a former member of the Springfield License Commission, I would agree, you know, each time that there was a violation for the sale of liquor, the fine associated with that will go to the owner, not to the employee. It is the owner's responsibility to train their employees properly, and so it would be my preference to keep it strictly for the owner of the business and not fine the employee, so we can play with, we could change the wording. Council Davila?
That's fine, I just I agree with you, Councilor Ramos, I will prefer the owner to, in my opinion, ultimately responsible for what happens in dirt. Who should bear the brunt of the fine of the whole fight? I'm just thinking that I'm sure how we handle repetitive offenders. And I guess if I made, Councilor Ramos asked the Sergeant, is there any lesson that we can learn from our experience with selling cigarettes to or selling Lucy's that we can apply to this ordinance in terms of progressive?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a unique question because you know, stores, we do have, you know, prohibitive ordinances about selling Lucy's per se, and it does happen. It, it's something that is difficult to police per se, because you know, our resources are limited. But gas stations and off-road vehicles or off-highway vehicles, that's much easier to spot and recognize and, and identify violators, so I, I think it'll be an easier ordinance to enforce because they'll have cameras that can be reviewed, video footage that let's say a violation happened yesterday, it comes to the police department's attention. We can go to the store and actually review the video and to see if there's a violation. As far as Lucy's and cigarettes and stuff like that, that's, that's almost, it's very difficult to backtrack and do an investigation, but I think off-road vehicles, off-highway vehicles, that will, that will be a much easier investigation for a follow-up.
Wait, Sergeant, I understand, my question was, is there anything within our experience bottling the illegal sale of cigarettes to minors and Lucy's in terms, in the, in the context of identifying problematic stores? Is there anything that is done now to address the store owners that could be applied to a potential continuous repeat offender store that keeps selling gasoline to off-road vehicles? That we can address, because I, I think I like about this ordinance, it will basically cut the head of the snake. No, no gas, no bike, simple. So again, I'm just thinking outside of the box, I don't pretend to go with the answer now, but you know, just thinking outside of the box here, how we can again, let people know that we're serious about.
I, I don't have any specific answer for you, I'm sorry, I don't know the logistics of enforcing those types of things, I could certainly find out and be a little more prepared with an answer for the next meeting. But I don't have a specific answer for you right now.
Yeah, anything, any lesson that we can learn from that experience that we could apply that could help us enforce this, and I know that manpower is difficult, and you get all that, but people should know exactly that these are the consequences, this doesn't happen, this is what happened next. But this is my question, thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you, Councilor, are there any other questions from the council?
Councilor Ramos, Council Curran here?
Yep. Go ahead, Council.
Again, great work on this ordinance, it's timely as the weather is getting better. And it's a great public safety for those who are on the road, but it's also public safety for these young people who are on these dirt bikes, because obviously those Papa Wheelys that we see, those are dangerous when they're doing them half a mile long. My question is this, and maybe our friends in Connecticut or Sergeant Peltier can chime in, or maybe you can chime in as well, Representative Ramos. If we're gonna move the kids, let's say hypothetically, nine or ten kids from filling up their dirt bike, and I alluded to it last meeting. When you fill up those one gallon or five gallon gas tanks for your lawnmower and whatnot, they don't automatically shut off. So hypothetically, you might have a situation where five or six kids go up to a gas pump and try to fill up those one gallon or five gallon gas, gas cans for their dirt bikes. And they don't fill up, they don't, they don't shut off when they fill up. And so my question is, does a fire marshal or even weights and measures, does anyone, in terms of like public safety, here's the fire regulate that, have a position to that, potentially, I mean, it's a public safety threat for those young people filling up those lawnmower gas tanks if they don't shut off, that's why I had asked last meeting. Is there, is there such a thing as like a, a one gallon gas pump or something like that? Your thoughts, Representative Ramos, or our friends from Connecticut, or if anyone can chime in on that?
Does anybody want to leave on their question?
Yeah, that's, that's a good area, I honestly it is intriguing, so you're saying if they put in a debit card, let's say that I guess debit you fifty dollars or something, they could sit there with a, with a gas tank, a one gallon tank and then fill up like nine bolts that are standing by?
Well, my concern Sergeant is this, and maybe I'm overthinking it. When I go and fill up the one gallon gas tank, I gotta know when to stop pumping the gas, whereas you fill up your car, it automatically shuts off if you overfill it. So now you're gonna have these eighteen-year-olds, nineteen-year-olds with these one gallon gas tanks. The, the gas tank doesn't, the gas pump doesn't automatically shut off. So there's an overspill on the, you know what I mean, it's a public safety in terms of a fire for, for these kids. You follow what I'm saying? When you're filling up these, instead of nine, instead of nine dirt bikes going to the gas pump, you're gonna have young people filling up the gas tanks, the lawnmower gas tanks, you know, the one gallon, five gallon gas tanks, and those don't shut off at the gas pump. Where if you fill up your car, or if you fill up a motorcycle, it does shut off automatically. So did anyone maybe, maybe we could reach out to the fire commissioner, is that, is it an issue? I don't, I don't know. I mean, usually when people fill up the gas tank for lawnmowers and they're watching it and you know, but if now you're gonna have a lot of seventeen-year-olds, eighteen-year-olds, nineteen-year-olds probably going to these gas pumps, is it a public safety issue for them? Because you gotta, you gotta figure that at that age, they're not gonna be maybe as careful not to overfill the gas tank, and you're gonna have gas spilling all over the place, perhaps.
Has that been an issue in Connecticut?
Chair Ramos, if I may? I'm not sure about regulations in your state, maybe it's a little bit different, but the automatic shut-off on the gas pumps is supposed to work as long as the nozzle is in the, that tank far enough. If they just hold the nozzle up near the top, no, it's not gonna shut off because it doesn't get that back pressure. So if the nozzle is all the way in to that one, even a one gallon tank, it should shut off, it just runs fast and they may get some spillage.
Okay, that makes sense, and I think and we can get confirmation from the, from the fire department, but I believe that's the case here as well, so hopefully that answers your question, Councilor, if not, then we can get more confirmation.
No, it's just, it's just a concern, you know, if, if they don't shut off and you have you know, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen-year-olds filling up these gas tanks, you could have a situation where they are spilling gasoline, which is not something we want.
Yeah, no, we definitely don't want to create another fire hazard, so thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions from the council before we close?
Also, I just have final comments. I just wanted to make sure that we are in agreement that the establishments would not have to pay for the signs, for the signage, and that's something that we will look to pick up since we're creating the ordinance. And so I wanted to look to increase the fines as well. I think dollars is low. And there's so much danger out here in the streets right now, and I think that so the fine goes to the owner of the business, right?
So as written, it goes either to the business or to the clerk. But I have a list in front of me of amendments that I'll be making or proposing, one of which is to make it the fine for the owner only.
Okay, and I, I don't, I guess I don't want to put a lot of underburdening on the owner of the establishment either, but it is serious enough that maybe the first offense we keep at a hundred and then incremental increases from there. I just wanted them to realize that is, it is a serious issue out here with these dirt bikes and I definitely support it. You know, I was nervous about the clerks dealing with the bikers, but we got SPD having our back, so I think that it'll be okay.
Thank you, Council, and just so everyone knows, so the list that I have in front of me in terms of amendments that I gathered from the last meeting and today, one is, one is suggested from Sergeant Peltier, which makes sense, is to to name, to change the name to off-highway vehicles, I believe. I forgot what we were using in the original ordinance, but that was one to give SPD the enforcement authority to, to give citations. And the fines should go only to the owners and not the clerks. Council Davila, did you have some final thoughts or final question?
I do, Mr. Chairman, if I just kind of piggybacking away to what Councilor Curran was saying. Again, I'm bringing back to this progressive, this schedule of fines. Is there, talking about the ways and measures, I do believe that the gas station on a yearly basis had to be certified for the ways and measures, is that correct?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
Because I wonder, I wonder, I believe they are or every so often they have to be inspected to make sure that if you put twenty bucks of gas, you get twenty dollars worth of gas. I do believe they are, so I wonder, again, I'm just thinking outside of the box here, Mr. Chairman, if we can somehow tie that if at all possible to say that any store with X amount of violations a year may not be certified, I'm just trying to, to again, just put some real teeth consequence here.
Sure, and, and I know that the, the fire department does, does issue some, some form of inspection through a yearly basis and there might be a good, a good way to, to go and handle it.
Yeah, I, I will. Yeah, I I I will suggest maybe, I don't know what your plans are, sir, in terms of timeline, but. I will suggest I will be interested to see what the ways and measure departments and the fire department has to say on this.
Yeah, I'm not certain that we can that we can. I I think the best approach for us as as municipal legislators would be to to speak to our department. Our Springfield Fire Department, not certain that we can go to the state because that may. Require some sort of home rule petition, but we could certainly reach out to the fire department. And have a conversation with them as to what, you know, what teeth we could put into the ordinance and. And at which point, what sort of certification they get from the cities. And you know, whether or not we can. You know, if if they have several fines, whether or not that that can be affected, so. That's a good point. I can invite Commissioner Koffey to be. Either at another follow-up committee meeting. I really would rather put this on the floor. And have Commissioner Koffey there to answer that question for you at the regular meeting. Meeting because as Council Curran mentioned, this is the season, you know, they're they're gonna start coming out now, so. We definitely want to have this on the books as soon as possible, so.
I would support that too, I would support that too, Council Ramos. Let's maybe move this as fast as possible.
Thank you, Counselor. I don't have a quorum in terms of a committee, so we can't make that recommendation, but but I will, as chairman, I will request that this. Ordinance be taken out of committee at the next regular meeting so that we can put it on the floor for a final vote. As amended, and we will make these amendments, and then I'll leave it up to the council. To decide what the what the actual fine should be. Whether it's a progress progressive discipline or we want to leave it or change the fines however we would like. So again, I just want to thank everyone for coming, especially our friends in New Haven. Thank you for giving us your time. I greatly appreciate it. This is how government works. We share ideas. And we really truly appreciate you being here. And if there's ever anything you need from the city of Springfield. Please feel free to reach out. Sergeant Pelter, as always, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. I will adjourn the meeting and again, we'll be taking this up. At the next regular meeting of the Springfield City Council. Thanks, everyone.